We'll open with a very Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
To everyone. Cannot believe it's 2023, but here we are. Didn't we just start school like last week?
Oh boy.
Okay. Everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission? Wait, 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 wait. The mission of the White Plains Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Before we start with very brief announcements, if we have any, I wanted to announce on behalf of Cheryl Brady. She did have a work commitment tonight and was unable to make it. And she wanted you all to know that she's very sorry that she's not with us tonight. Next, I would like a motion. I'd like a motion to do our individual action items. Item nine, move that up in the agenda before the long-range plan.
They're so kind, right?
So moved.
Post-Road's like, wait, do we still have this?
We're here in the full intensity.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're gonna go right to our individual action item, of which we have one tonight. We have the recommended approval of the administrative appointment of Gabriel Robles for Assistant Principal at Ridgeway School. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Wow.
Any comment?
He's a jerk.
Do you want to say anything?
I would love to.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. And very soon, I think, congratulations to Mr. Robles. And it's great to have you here this evening. And I know your family's here, as well as a number of colleagues who are here to support you. This is a very special moment, not only for you and your family and in your career, but also for White Plains. Being a graduate, coming all the way through the school district, going off and going to college, and then coming back after various experiences in education, and working your way all the way up until where you are right now presently, and to move into Assistant Principal is really a tremendous thing. And it's great. It's a great reflection also, Gabe, on our community. And we're so happy. And I am particularly very, very proud of you and to see you continue to rise. And I know we're not done. And I'll tell you, as we move forward in terms of support, we're all gonna be here to stand by you, support you, and help you to continue to keep our children first and foremost in everything that we do. So hopefully, it's a yes.
No, we're not giving out. No, 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 that's okay. No clutching. No worries. And I'll just, if I could add, Dr. Ricka, you know, the testament is, you know, having all of your colleagues here, your support. And not too long ago, you know, Dr. Crawford, you know, another big night for us. It's really nice to just see everyone gathered here to celebrate in a few minutes.
Hopefully.
And a few seconds. Okay. And with that, may I say, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Do you have any comment? Any brief comment?
What? Brief?
I am just so truly grateful for this wonderful, wonderful opportunity. And one thing that I know is that I'm only able to be here ready to spread my wings and soar because I've quite literally been lifted up by giants. And not those playoff-bound New York football giants, but the giants in this community who for three decades have helped shape me into the best version of the person, teacher and coach, husband, father, friend, that I can be. And so I'm really looking forward to continuing that, to partnering with Dr. Crawford. And sad to be leaving MAS, but really excited for what the future holds. And so thank you to the board, Dr. Ricka, the cabinet, and to everyone here. My friends, my colleagues couldn't do it without you. Mr. Jay couldn't do it without you. Sped, everyone here, thank you. Denise, I mean, what an absolute hero. So thank you. Thank you all. And I'm really looking forward to moving forward together to do what's best for our kids. So thank you so much.
Non-president, Mr. Pepper and Search Committee, you know, did an exhaustive job. And I want to also recognize and thank Scott and also all the community members and colleagues who served on that search committee that brought us to where we are tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Ricka. So we recognize that there are young ones here tonight, which is why we moved it up. So if anyone needs to leave now, is the time to exit stage center. If you would like, you're welcome to stay. But if you would like to leave, it's certainly understandable.
Can you just find your route?
Yeah.
You can have a few more connections.
Yes.
You got the job, Gaby.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, not twice.
Congratulations. Have fun. Thanks. Enjoy, sweetie. Awesome.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we have Christmas.
I know, I know. If anyone else wants to move up to the front, there's not enough room, feel free. So following our agenda, we'll have any announcements? I don't have any announcements. The year has just started, really. So I don't know if anyone else?
Not yet.
Nope. Not yet. Great. So without further ado, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Absolutely. Before we begin with our review of the long-range plan, I would like to welcome our student liaison to give our first report of 2023.
Do you have two?
Yes, there you go. So sorry. And I know, I don't know if you guys heard yet, but I know the PTA Council was interested also in receiving your updates. You did? Great.
Joe, put your mic on. Go. Thank you. Sorry.
Hello, my name is Sinclair Harris.
And my name is Delia. And we're here just to give a report on all the good news that's happened throughout the school districts and the schools so far. So I'll start with Church Street. For Church Street, December was full of winter cheer. And the fourth and fifth graders, they spread a holiday cheer at their winter concert. And they also ended their month with a Winter Spirit Week that included a Winter Wonderland in their auditorium. And during the month of December, Church Street, they collected gloves, hats, and scarves for students in the school community. And fifth graders created no-sew blankets during recess for an adult day center. The month also ended with a showing of what it means to be supportive in a community in a time of need. And at Church Street, they were relocated due to a power outage. And everyone pitched in to ensure that the Tigers there were safe, fed, and above all, happy. And even though it didn't go as planned, they still made the most of their situation and spent the morning singing, dancing, and engaging in a school-wide read-aloud and a movement activity. And Church Street School would also like to thank all who provided support on that day. And they're also looking forward to a family reading night on January 24th, as they'll come together to have and enjoy read-alouds as a school community. And then turning to MAS, they kicked off Kindness Month in December by participating in a "One School, One Read" of "The Mittens Tree" by Candice Christensen. And this was inspired, this inspired them to create their own mittens tree and engage in random acts of kindness. And the students, their families, and faculty were able to donate over 500 winter items, such as hats, scuffs, gloves, scarves, and mittens. And these were all given to the Blythe Dale Children's Hospital in Valhalla. And some of the fifth graders also formed a kindness group, which focused on projects in school and in the community. And this was also to promote random acts of kindness and ensure a supportive community for MAS. And MAS also continues to be very thankful and appreciative for the individual outreach and support of their PTA. And families received assistance from the PTA throughout the holiday season with meals, gifts, and more. And also turning to Ridgeway, the fourth graders there are working on STEM projects together in addition to Ms. Katz's class showing off their vehicles and egg passengers from their STEM projects. Other students had to design a vehicle that would keep their egg passenger safe during a crash. And all of their groups were successful. Ms. Grogan's fourth grade class also reported that all of the egg passengers were left undamaged after their vehicle crashed. And they have some great engineers in the fourth grade classes at Ridgeway. And turning to Post-Road, on December 13th, their winter concert portrayed their band orchestra and chorus having amazing night, and they packed the Post-Road Theater. Their second graders went to a trip to the Maritime Aquarium, and everyone loved the shark tank. Third and fourth grade teachers are continuing to teach their science-21 curriculum in classrooms. And Ms. Osorio conducted her principal's chat with our Post-Road community and preparing to launch the "One School, One Book" event on January 9th in addition. The entire school is very excited. And you have to stay tuned to find the name of the book because it'll be a surprise. And the backyard sports basketball team will begin their practices on January 12th as well. And in George Washington, in December, they hosted their Equity Visit. And the focus was celebrating bilingualism and bilinguacy in their dual-language programs. And additionally, the kindergarten and third grade classes hosted a Polar Express celebrations. And fifth graders also participated in a senior brunch right before the holiday to kick off the season.
Okay. So I'll start with White Plains High School. On December 23rd, we held our entire Community Day and partially our Holiday Bazaar, where multiple clubs throughout the high schools, such as the Spanish Club, the Marachi Club, French Club, held activities, they sold snacks, games. And although it was a short period, a lot of us had fun. We really enjoyed it before the holiday break. On December 15th, our string concert and symphony orchestras performed. And there was an amazing turnout and fantastic playing by part of the orchestras. And the annual holiday craft was held on Saturday, December 10th. Our Tiger community was able to shop for local jewelry, student art, homemade crafts, and much more. There was an amazing turnout from the community, and it definitely was enjoyable for everyone. And in Rochambeau High School, on December 23rd, they held their annual award assembly. Awards were given for academic achievement, attendance, and citizenship. On December 1st, students and staff decorated bookmarks that were donated to seniors at the Kensington Living Facility in White Plains. And they also held their annual ban mittens tournament on December 20th and 21st, where student junior Moody took home the trophy once again. He is Rochambeau's champion two years running now. And finally, with Eastview Middle School, the winter concerts were held on November 30th and December 7th. There was a success and amazing performances held by the students. And there was also an avid school-wide event on December 22nd, where 29 college students met with students and shared stories of the steps that they took towards college acceptance, as well as selecting career pathways. And finally, on December 9th, 272 students were acknowledged in a building-wide honorable assembly. Both the students and the parents came out. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sinclair and Delia, once again, outstanding. Thank you so much for taking the time. We really do appreciate it.
Maybe we should tell them they don't have to stay.
Oh, yes. And of course, you don't have to stay either.
Yeah, so you get your rides, and you can study more, get more As, and all that kind of stuff.
Ready?
Okay, mom.
Couple of quick announcements before we dive into the long-range plan update. Winter weather, still around. So just bear in mind, we'll do our best to keep everybody updated. Any type of schedule changes that need to be put into place, if need be. But of course, we'll keep our eye closely in the next seven to 10 days. So far, and the extended forecast looks pretty good. Forty degrees, 50 degrees, I'll take it. Another step closer to spring. The 2023-2024 calendar draft is gonna be coming out in the next couple of months. I know it's hard to believe, but we're working on that now. So we will have that for the board to consider and hopefully approve at one of our March meetings. Just anybody who was thinking about the next academic year calendar. I also want to take a moment to congratulate two of our students who are recognized for the Martin Luther King Junior Youth Legacy Awards. And I want to thank, I know President Eller was part of that committee that was working on identifying these outstanding young people. Emily Portillo, 10th grader at the high school for social justice. Emily, sorry, is a member of our youth court as well. And Sophia Farrell, a senior at the high school for the Spirit of Love. And she is president of the Mayor's Youth Council. So big congratulations to our Tigers there for that recognition. And thanks as well to the African-American men of Westchester for all their support in the annual Youth Legacy Awards. As we talked about just a couple of minutes ago, we're really proud to welcome Mr. Robles into a new role beginning July 1st. And we want to again thank everybody who participated in that search process, as well as Dr. Crawford for all of her insight and support through that process as well. Congratulations to you too, Dr. Crawford. The 2023-2024 proposed budget is on the horizon. We're very excited to be putting that together. And soon, the final touches on the proposal for, of course, the Audit and Financing Budget Committee's review, and then the Board of Education's review as we lead up into May for the annual vote. But first, the long-range plan. I want to start this year off right. I want to make sure that people like me. So I'm not going to do the 91-slide presentation this evening.
We've seen it.
I was just gonna say, the Board of Education has taken that journey with me last week. And I do want to recognize and thank the Finance and Audit Committee for all of their hard work in getting us to where we are right now. Dr. Vicaro Teich, the cabinet, the team, everybody. This is the culmination of everybody's work and effort. Mr. Stefanelle knows, I mean, you know, everybody comes together and works on this. And we're really proud, WP proud, of course, to share where we're at in terms of long-range planning. But also that as we begin to move forward to the proposed budget, we are in very strong fiscal footing. And we see a very strong future. Of course, there are things that we don't know. But to the best of our ability, we are conservative in our projections. And we're setting ourselves up for continued success into the future. So without any additional fanfare, I'll move right into this evening's presentation. So the cycle of planning for the long-range plan, of course, is multifaceted. And it begins with the district strategic plan and builds from all the way up and into each year's proposed budget. And we continue to model and link all of the work that we do all throughout the school district with these goals and objectives, including all of our individual goals and objectives. So everything from my annual goals to our administrative leadership's annual goals, everybody's linked and connected and all moving in the same direction to support our children. There's a lot that goes into, rather, a lot that schools face each year. We're an open system, so that means we're subject to a lot of uncontrollable variables. Things like a turbulent economy or changes that come down from the state education department. Dealing with aging facilities, power outages, as we had just talked about before. You know, whatever, you name it, we have to be ready for it. And that's why planning is so important. The long-range plan allows us to take stock, step back, look around, make sure that we have a good sense of where we are today and where we want to be in the coming years. It also encourages our school district to be effective and efficient in the use of our resources and change the distribution of resources and the deployment of resources when needed to be able to both improve and expand and support the program and remain fiscally responsible and conservative and only using what we need to use to further our children's educational program and experiences. We have been for years, and it's a credit to the Board of Education and the community of White Plains, we have been in a very strong fiscal, stable situation for a number of years now. We want to keep that pattern going. The long-range plan will help to enable us to do that into the future as well. We want to maintain our programs. Want to make sure we're protecting instructional core. And we know that all the decisions that we make today are not just decisions for now, but they're gonna be decisions that are gonna have impacts in the years to come as well. So just in the sense of, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Vicaro Teich to come on up here with me, because we're gonna tag-team a little bit. But in the sense of economic status and outlook, you know, I don't need to describe to you where we've been. We've all kind of been there together. And we've gone through those challenges together. As we're looking forward into 2023 through 2027, there's a lot to consider. One of the things, and I was just talking with Mr. Ricky about this this morning, you know, we appreciate and recognize that every elected official we've spoken to has told us that the foundation aid funding will remain and that the allocation of foundation aid that the state has determined will be distributed to each school district will continue along in its distribution timeline. We're skeptical. We've lived through gap-elimination adjustment in the past. We recognize that there are a lot of fiscal stressors nationally, which of course will have impact and reverberate into the state of New York. That said, we are optimistic because we have received multiple assurances that that's not going to be the case, that Governor Hochul is not going to play politics with our children's education. So we remain optimistic there. But certainly, that's something we have to keep an eye on. One-time-only federal funding, those dollars that were associated with pandemic support, those are gonna dry out, and they're gonna go away. And as you know, in the White Plains City School District, we worked very quickly and carefully to make sure that those allocations were gonna be used as prudently as possible, but also in a way that's gonna give us the most bang for our buck, right? HVAC, all throughout the school district, as an example. Master Facilities Plan, we have new program space coming online in the next couple of years. We're working on that now. We also know that we're dealing with inflation. We're dealing with market trends, ups and downs, and inconsistencies and unknowns there as well. We have enrollment, as you'll see in the next couple of slides, that not, again, not unique. We're seeing this everywhere. It's trending downward. Fewer live births in the last five years. That is a fact. That's something we're not only seeing here in White Plains, but we're seeing that all throughout the country, really. And then, of course, state and federal government policies. If you could tell me what they're gonna be in the next couple of years, I want to hire you. But we have to always keep our eye on what's happening at the federal level because it will have impacts here as well.
So just like we are experiencing at home, you know, there is significant inflation that we're feeling, both with utilities and food and so forth. And you can see that this is the Consumer Price Index and that the last couple of months we've been upwards of 8% with our CPI. And, you know, for the last 10 years, we were hovering around 0%. So it's really important for us to understand that the community is having these stressors, as well as the district, with our increase in utilities and electricity and fuel oil and food.
Ten-year projected loss of about 902 students. So again, while we're looking down the road, this isn't dramatic in terms of a huge drop-off, but it is significant. And it is going to be something that we want to keep our eye on. Folks ask, I mean, you remember several years ago, we were having conversations related to development and how that may or may not stress or impact the school district. Right now, in terms of the numbers that we're looking at, the trending in enrollment is going down, dipping down. We've seen this happen in the, you know, in past history in the school district. It comes in peaks and valleys over the decades. But this is gonna definitely be a trend that we want to keep our eyes on because we want to make sure that if we have to make any changes within the organization to right-size the organization for the number of students who we are serving, that that comes naturally. Again, preserve and protect the instructional core.
This slide really depicts the fact that we've been working hard to continually return money to our taxpayers. So over the last six years, we've saved the taxpayers over $120 million through reducing the tax levy that we could raise from the taxpayers, funding our capital projects with savings, and paying off debt service. And we're self-funded for tax sorcery refunds, payments to employees who leave our employ, and one-time-only expenses instead of having to build that into our annual budgets.
And a lot of credit, certainly, to the team here in the business office. Huge amount of credit also to, again, the Finance Audit Committee and the Board of Education. And Board of Education is always very, very careful in terms of every single dollar that's spent. And really does expect us to find efficiencies and ways in which we can save and save potential increases to our taxpayers. Everything's about continuous improvement. We know that we can always do better. Long-range plan allows us to do that as well. Planning to increase our effectiveness and efficiency allows for ongoing curricular review and programmatic review. What are we doing well? What can we do better? What needs changing? Anything that we can strategically abandon that isn't giving us the impact that we had hoped. Academic achievement continues to be our number one, after safety and security, our number-one priority for our children. And we are looking very carefully, especially now coming out of the pandemic, and making sure we're providing the supports and services that our children need to be able to fill in any gaps and make those moves that we expect to see developmentally each and every year. Extracurricular and athletic participation is huge in our school district, and we're so proud of that. We continue to add teams because we have children who want to play. They want to participate, not just on the field, not just in athletics, but also in extracurricular activities, enrichment and extension activities. You think of things like after-school, weekends, summer expansion. We are open for business, and our children are here. And they want to be with us. And we want to be able to continue to provide those services. Universal approaches to educational experience. Again, we were just talking about this. Wherever our children are in terms of their learning, we want to be able to fashion and provide a program for them that is not only gonna support them and excite them, but also stretch them and allow them to reach, just like our mission says, reach for their goals, reach for all of the things that could be possible. So whether that's high-level courses, whether that's an additional robotics opportunity or a sports opportunity, or whether it's support because, you know what, I'm having a hard time in math. We want to have all and continue to have all of those types of programming available for our children now and into the future. Again, staffing services, where our resources are and planning for the future, all part of long-range plan. Ann loves this slide. I do too, because I think it is important to restate every year. But I feel like I have it, you know, it's kind of like beating in my heart, right? Protect, evaluate, preserve, find, delay, and reduce. And, you know, this is really what it's about. Preserving our children's instructional program. The city of White Plains, our community, has invested a great deal and devoted a great deal of time to building an exceptional program for our children to participate in. And we want to make sure that we're protecting that at all costs And we want to make sure that we're protecting that at all costs and then making changes to it to meet with the times and with what our kids need as we look into the future. Dr. Karatish, you ready?
Ready.
Revenue assumptions.
So one of the major components of our revenues, of course, is the tax levy that we put in place to support our appropriations budget. And the tax levy calculation is very complex and involves several assumptions. The tax based growth factor, which is set by New York State Tax and Finance, and that's physical property being added to the tax rolls. So that factor is a component. The allowable growth factor, the lesser of the Consumer Price Index or two percent. So for the 12 month change ending December 22, we're anticipating for 23, 24 to be over eight percent, but we're limited to the two percent cap. So in essence, if we were allowed to have CPI, we certainly could raise more taxes. Pilots, payment in lieu of taxes. Those are where commercial property owners will make agreements with the Westchester County Industrial Development Agency, and those commercial properties will come off the tax rolls and will receive those payments directly. For this 23, 24, there are three pilot agreements that are coming online and one that's returning back to the tax rolls. The capital exclusion, that is our debt service payments, principal and interest, less building aid that we receive on completed capital projects and also less the amount that we fund to offset those principal and interest payments through debt service reserve. Also included in the assumptions for the capital exclusion is the, is that we are anticipating that we're going to issue debt in July of '24 based on estimates of our fiscal advisor and the corresponding building aid that we would receive for that. So that's where you see the capital exclusion and maintaining that local share. So this is the modeling of the tax levy cap. And what you'll see is that we are estimating at the very bottom in the golden rod, 1.94 percent in a tax levy tax increase. But that is with putting forward a $3 million decrease in the levy and also a $2 million decrease in the capital tax levy exclusion to help offset debt. And so that is $5 million that we're looking to reduce the maximum allowable tax levy. And you can see here, if we didn't put anything towards the levy, the formula allows us to really calculate a tax levy of up to 4.49%. With the $2 million that we're putting towards the capital exclusion, it would be 3.47%. And then with the additional $3 million, it's 1.94%. So we're making that recommendation primarily because foundation aid now, we're in the third year for 23, 24, will receive $5.1 million. And we're receiving an additional $2 million because of inflationary costs. So that's $7.3 million more in state aid, hence why we're making that recommendation to buy down the levy an additional $3 million. Okay. Other revenues are primarily, we are estimating them at flat in comparison to prior years. Our expense driven state aid would go up similar to what the expenses are going up. So that's primarily flat. Again, demographic data.
Yeah, pretty straightforward, exactly.
So here are expenditure assumptions. Personnel costs are based on our existing bargaining unit agreements, our pension plan contributions, teacher's retirement system is projected to go down slightly, and our employee's retirement system is actually projected to go up 13%, going from a contribution rate of salaries from 11.6 to 13.1%. Our health insurance is actually increasing quite a bit this coming year to eight percent, and that is really based on the claims that are coming in over the past 24 months for the district's plan with Swiss ships. Our workers' compensation insurance also going up, you know, estimated 10% due to our loss ratio. Tax sorcery refunds, we are self-funded, so we're estimating that 3.5 million will be expended in refunds for this current year. And we're expecting the reserve that we need to maintain for outstanding potential claims to be similar to last year at 62.2 million. Legal counsel is, you know, updating that information, so we'll provide that in our next round of projections. Debt service, our annual principal and interest payments are 9.9 million. You know, as we talked about, $2 million we use out of the debt service reserve to defray those costs. And our fiscal advisor is recommending one time only that we contribute another million dollars for future offsets to our debt service to maintain that level debt to our taxpayers. Utilities, incredible increases, projecting 20% for next year, you know, we hopefully that will clamp down in future years. Property insurance, again, increasing due to the value of our properties and our buildings and the contents. Most of our other contractual expenses, you know, for BOSs or contracted services, we're estimating one to five percent. And then we maintained, you know, having additional capital projects of a million and a half in furniture replacement district wide during the future out years. So what does that all kind of compile to? So for 22, 23, very preliminary, right? We do multiple projections now going forward throughout the year. We are estimating revenues, expenditures to exceed revenues by 20.4 million, but that is favorable as compared to what our adjusted budget actually calls for us to have, which is our expenditures to exceed revenues by 34 million. And that is because we're appropriating our fund balance. We had the taxpayers approve $24 million in capital projects that were taken from our reserve and moving over to our capital projects fund. And the same thing with our prior year encumbrances and payment of our tax certs. We're self-funded, so we're using those funds in order to pay for those bills. So because of that favorable variance of 13.6 million, we are recommending $3 million in some one-time only expenses, a million dollars to fund future debt service, a million dollars to continue our interactive TV project and replacing them, and a million dollars in various facility projects. And with all of that, we still anticipate that we'll be able to replenish our reserves and still make an additional deposit to our 22 capital reserve. And then the out years will refine as we have more data.
And everything in the long range plan right now, both instructional and non-instructional, is budget neutral. So, you know, when you think about, and thank you, Ann, when you think about the planning process, as I had made mention before, you know, last year's budget reflected no increase, right? No increase of taxpayer. You look at what potentially the school district could be looking at, four and a half percent in terms of a tax increase. Right now, early days yet, of course, but right now recommending under two and keeping our costs or our cost increase to taxpayers as low as possible while still making sure we're attending to all the programmatic needs and the new programs. There's going to be new stuff that we're going to talk about when we talk about the instructional and non-instructional budget, and it's still going to come with that, we believe, we hope, that budget neutral scenario. Has to, as Ann just whispered to me. So a lot of, again, many steps in the process, and we love this. We believe that the system that we have in place here where we have several iterations and conversations and multiple, multiple looks and discussions. In fact, you know, we just had meetings this morning with all the principals and this afternoon with Mr. Dixon and the secondary school principals, you know, again, reviewing early stages of budget development. And this is very, very important. So the next step that we'll have will be February 13th, day before Valentine's Day, and we'll do instructional budget presentation to the Board of Education. Then we'll do non-instructional on the 27th. Then we'll have the preliminary budget on the 6th, and then of course, the full board, rather, on the 13th of March, the sixth is financing audit. But we're well on our way. We're moving, you know, again, very, in a very confident posture and also recognizing that we want to make sure we continue to keep this trademark of stability for future years as well. Thank you again, so many, thank you very much, Doc. So many hands in this work and really I can't overstate how grateful we are to have the partnership that we have. You don't get to these kinds of products without so many different people bringing their voices to the table. So again, thank you, Ann, and thanks everybody for everything. Happy to answer any questions, but I will say this, right? You see, I just did that, happy to answer any questions, but you know, it really is, there's a 91 slide presentation. And I really do encourage everybody in our community to go through and really take a look at it. It is chock full of information and if you have any questions about any, and this is, of course, for folks who are watching at home, if you have any questions about anything, as we do every year, we have budget@wpcsd.us set up as an email. You can email any questions related to budget or finance to us. We will get back to you and we will make sure that we get you the information that you need.
So I want to thank everyone, certainly to the Board of Education, to Dr. Ricker and to the Cabinet. We certainly appreciate being here this evening. To the parents, we also appreciate being here with you. My name is Leroy Dixon. I am the proud principal of Eastview Middle School. I have with me my partner, Ms. Lasser. She is the proud principal of Eastview Middle School and we've served, assistant principal, that's right, sorry, assistant principal. She's right on this and she has my back, but we've served together for quite some time and so we enjoy working with one another. I appreciate working with her and everything that she does for Eastview. We're going to be short. I want to just begin with our vision. I love this vision. I know that we grappled over this in 2007 and 2006 when we thought about the mission statement, but every time I think about Eastview and I think about being a White Plains Tiger, I think about this statement, "We aspire to unlock the infinite and unique potential of each student every day." That is what we're here to do. That is what we love doing. That is the work of all of us in this room today. And so my comments and our comments will be brief. One of the things about Eastview is that we have the task of taking all five elementary schools and bringing them into one building, and we have this finite amount of time. We only have but so many days. I think, how many last, how many, how many days, Ms. Lasser, about 182? 182. If we don't have any snow days. To really make this work and to build community. And so at Eastview, when we think about, Eastview is really about those intangibles. How do we create those experiences to build student agency? How do we create those experiences when students are ignited so that they learn? How do we continue to create experiences where students have an appreciation for who they are and who they are going to be? At Eastview, we're broken up into five distinct SUNY school teams. We have Albany. We have SUNY Cortland. Do we have any Cortland people in the house? We have the Stony Brook Seawolves. Very nice. We have Purchase College and we have Geneseo. And so, very nice. When we thought about these names, we wanted to really identify something or schools that represent New York and what it means to live in the state of New York. And so we felt that the SUNY names were, of course, would be the correct names for our teams and our school. And so what we are celebrating is we're celebrating a couple of highlights. I think when you think about, when I began thinking about this presentation tonight, I came across maybe about 500 pictures. Each picture. Easily, right? Each picture represented something of value to all of us. It was like, you know, making decisions about my children. Every picture mattered. And so it was very difficult to really capture just the essence of Eastview very quickly and very succinctly. And so right here, we are going to celebrate the return of school and all that we do with the return of school. And so at Eastview, because our time is limited, we are responsible for transitions. And so as you see here in the pictures, we have teachers helping students to learn how to use a locker. Yes, a lock and a locker, which is, it seems very simple, but if you want to be a rock star student, learn how to use a locker at the middle school level and you are certainly the rock star. We have students for the first time in all of their education, they're having their own iPad that they share with the school district. And so again, here, just celebrating those transitions are really important. This year, Eastview, we gave our IDs as part of the ID initiative. We asked all of our students to wear their IDs throughout the day. We believe that's the right thing to do as adults in schools. We wear IDs and we are asking our students to use their IDs as well. And we thank the board and we thank, where's Ann? The IDs, they are great for the buses as well, so we really like that initiative. It's very efficient and very fast. And so we love the idea that we have IDs that students now have around their neck and that they wear in school. So we can talk about transitioning the lockers, we can talk about walking to the right and all those good things that make a building efficient. But at Eastview, we seek to build community. I love these pictures. These are current pictures of students who are in our building. These are their baby pictures. It speaks for itself. I looked at these and I was caught with emotion on them, but they're just beautiful. And the reason why we share these pictures is in building community, we believe that in order for us to build community, we have to have students identify themselves and see themselves in the space. And so when you walk into Eastview, what you will see is you will see representation of every child in that building in some form of fashion. This month, we've asked students to submit their baby pictures. I thought I would submit my baby picture because I was a little embarrassed, so I didn't do that. But it's really about creating space and opportunity to share who we are and who they once were as babies. And then we ask them to submit selfies. We love looking at our students because they, because they represent the very best of the White Plains City School District. And even we have a young person with a mask on, absolutely. There is space and room for everyone in Eastview. And again, the idea of building community is important, but this picture right here, this speaks to who we are as a community. And so at Eastview, if you notice here, there is a theme about identity that's really starting to evolve in front of you right now. This is about celebrating our rituals, celebrating our families and celebrating who we are as community members. We believe at Eastview, if you want to build community, then it's important that students can see who they are, see themselves in learning, in the learning and identify with those aspects of their life that they find valuable. And sitting at a table, taking a picture with their family represents the very best of the White Plains City School District. As we thought about transitions and it wasn't just about pictures, but it was really about how students see themselves. And so we asked students across the building to create I am poems. And so if you have the chance to walk around Eastview, you will see poems about students all over the place. And so as I look at this one, Danielle, funny, short, creative, daughter of Louis and Lucy, who loves blueberry lemon and McDonald's, who feels happy, who needs family, friends and a phone, which is interesting, who gives respect, smiles, hugs, who fears heights, dates spiders and would like to see Hawaii, who dreams of being a doctor. A student in Ms. Kunt's class, again, it is about creating space. It is about students having the opportunity to see themselves in the learning. And again, if you go around Eastview, we celebrate, again, this idea of cultural identity and individualism and being part of a community. We asked students this year to create a social contract. We had representatives from each team meet on a Friday afternoon and students, they created a contract for themselves for students. Treat your peers and adults with respect. These are their rules. Follow the dress code and the hallway rules. Again, these are their rules. Verbal and physical bullying is unacceptable. I like that one. Use caution and be appropriate while using all technology. It is the bane of our existence, this technology, but it's something that students must learn how to use. Use appropriate language and respect school property. Students put this social contract together and every morning during morning meeting, they go over the social contract. And I think if I'm not mistaken, they are participating in a survey that really deals with, again, just assessing their emotions and their feelings, and they're going to give that information back to us in this survey. This survey, this again was created by SSO and our student officers. At Eastview, we celebrate instruction. We can do a lot of things, but the one thing that we want to really highlight this year is that we made a commitment to the workshop model. And we are happy about that work. We believe in that work. We believe that this work is going to really, really help our students. And it gives access to everyone to be in this space where they are learning and they're reading and writing together as a class. And at Eastview, and it said it couldn't be done, but we have contiguous instruction in ELA at a secondary school. And I'll say that again, because I'm really proud of that one. We have contiguous instruction in ELA at a secondary school, meaning our students, who they have for English period one is who they have for English period two. That was a feat that we had been thinking about for quite some time and it's something that we've committed to and it's something that we did and we're happy about it. We believe that this is going to have a huge impact and it will be an impact of consequence when our students take these New York State exams in April and May of this school year. And so we're very, very excited about the commitment to the workshop model and the commitment to creating a schedule that really supports that at the secondary level, and we're very happy about that. Again, in our workshop model, not only are we having a workshop model for just for our students in our ELA classes, but for every student, we're providing access and equity of instruction through small group, through conferencing. And again, right here, what we are looking at is we're thinking about and we're talking about how do we build student agency with this work that we're doing? That is an intangible that really, when you put that together, that agency piece with executive function and great instruction, is a recipe for great learning. It is a recipe for great students. It's a recipe for students to really grow and to really grow tall and strong as a metaphor here at Eastview. here at Eastview. We have our rising stars. These are my guys. These are my babies. And we have our babies who are now engaged in an early literacy skill builder program where they're learning how to read. It's something that we've been looking at and saying, how do we continue to build reading skills in our cell program? And so again, how can we talk about our students without talking about our rising stars? And I love this picture. Someone sent it to me today and I just had to put it in because it speaks to the potential of our students and what they can do, given the right supports. And we thank the board and we thank the cabinet for giving us, again, the space and the resources and the time to do this work. And we thank, and we thank Ms. Algarden for the vision on this work right here. Avid. We've gone back to avid. We said avid is got, it has to be schoolwide. And so every morning, we are reviewing our avid strategies and our avid protocol with our students in our morning meeting. We have committed to avid and we've, and we've doubled down on really the implementation of avid building wide. And we're asking students to really think deeply about this, but we're asking teachers to integrate this work into the daily work of student learning in the classrooms. Again, just a commitment back to avid, we feel is another way to, again, build student agency. It's that invisible tangible that, that, that allows students to learn how to navigate these known structures called schools. As you heard from our students earlier, on December 22nd, I believe, we had avid steps to success with 29 students engaged in conversations. And I thank them, I thank them so much because they, they spoke with our 11-year-olds and our 11-year-olds had a lot of questions for them, but they did come in and they did speak with our students. They spent the day just talking with them while they were in the language arts class about how to really take those steps to college. Again, building agency for our students. We really love this commitment and these are all former White Plains High School students and current White Plains High School students. This is just outstanding. They did take a survey. I will give you the information. We wanted to know how did they feel about their learning and about their experiences here in the White Plains City School District. So I will share that information with you, Dr. Ricker. Some great information we got from this particular group. And, and, and for the most part, they were very, very happy with their experiences here. And they felt prepared for college. I was very happy to see that. This speaks for itself. Our clubs, but this is our strength right here. This is White Plains. When I think of White Plains, not only do I think of clubs, but I think of our diversity. This speaks for itself. Our clubs are a big, 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 a big, a big factor in the student experiences at our school. And so we have from any club that you can think about, from football to basketball to soccer, the girls' kickboxing, but we have some other clubs, like the Humanity Club.
I want to go to that one.
Yeah, the kickboxing, that's a pretty good one. Jump rope. What else do we have, Ms. Lassiter? Cooking, we, you name it. Guitar.
Art. Lacrosse.
Lacrosse. And again, this is about our community, community really making a commitment to children and providing them with experiences and giving us the space so that students can grow within these spaces. But just something as simple and as fabulous as a humanity club, a club that really thinks about other people, that's at the heart of SEL and really being of service to our community. And again, I just wanted to highlight this particular group right here for their work in our school. Unity Day. This was another big initiative. I wanted to highlight this as well. Again, at Eastview, our time is finite. We only have a small amount of time, so we have to really pack it in, but not pack it in too much, but enough so that they have these experiences that they, that they continue to grow. School dance. Eastview is known for its school dance and our students, they are the DJs. Every student that joins the SO club, the first thing they learn how to do is plan a dance and they learn how to use DJ equipment. It's, that's just fabulous, right? I do not know how to use DJ equipment. I don't know the first thing about it, but they learn very quickly. And we keep this equipment from year to year. That picture speaks for itself, but it's about having fun and it's about having these opportunities to ignite learning. And so at Eastview, just a couple of quick highlights. One, we love the fact that parents returned this year. Last year, we had a very difficult time getting parents in, but this year we were able to bring parents in. And if you notice, those are new tables, just a plug for our new tables in the district. They're quite pretty. And that's one of the smallest rooms in the district and we were able to fit 30 people in that room using those tables. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But that is who we are as a district. But our parents are back, sitting at our new tables and they were back for open school night. And we love having parents back in the building. With that, we were able to bring parents back for our honor roll assembly, for our winter concerts, for our Veterans Day. If you want to see something beautiful, and, and I, I don't get emotional, but Veterans Day, it is a tearjerker. I will tell you that. And so if you want to see something that really brings community together, please come out to our Veterans Day. But the fact that we could have Veterans Day and bring our parents in and all of our students in one auditorium, we were happy. We're happy to bring parents back for American Education Day. Again, just really embracing the fact that we can be in partnership with our parents. This month, we have International Night. We're bringing that back and that's a big, big night in January. And we will have Eastview on Broadway and thank you to the Board of Ed. International Night, I think it's January 27th, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, but I'll, we'll send out invitations, but International Night is back and we have a school trip for the first time in three years, a school-wide trip to medieval times. Everyone is going. Everyone is going. Again, Veterans Day, it, it is something to see. I'm a veteran myself. I love it. At the end of the Veterans Day ceremony, I usually have something in my eye and I have to walk out. I've looked around the room and seen other people have something in their eye, their eye, and they, they too have walked out because they've had something in their eye. But please, support all of these initiatives and really have people just up, if they can. If you want to see something, if you want to see a commitment to honoring those who serve, come to the Veterans Day celebration. It is emotional. And last but not least, and we end with this, and thinking about tonight, you know, normally I try to wrap everything up with a beginning where I try to contextualize and then I try to come back to it. But this story, and I'm going to end with this story right here. I shared this story with our new families last year. It's this miracle of the Chinese bamboo tree. When we met with our parents last year at the fifth, fifth grade, we talked to them about thinking about what it means to parent with students and what it means to really help students grow. And so the context that I wanted for them to have was the Chinese bamboo tree. So if you ever study Stephen R. Covey's work, he talks about something called the miracle of the bamboo tree, that when you plant a bamboo tree, a Chinese bamboo tree, when you plant it, nothing happens. Nothing happens for four years straight. It doesn't matter what you do. Nothing happens. It will make you absolutely crazy. But in the fifth year, this plant, these seeds, they grow to be 80 feet tall. 80 in the fifth year. Now, one would think that the star of the show, of the story is the bamboo plant. But it's really not the plant itself, because the plant is going to grow, because that's what plants do. You give them right, the right amount of space and air fertilization, they're going to eventually grow. The star of this story is the farmer. And the farmer is the star because the farmer has an unyielding faith, a belief that what they are doing is working. They believe in something that they can't see, is this amazing faith that it's going to work. And so when we think about raising children and teaching children, particularly at Eastview, because we don't get to see them beyond 182 days, we believe like the farmer that what we do is important. And in the end, even though that we can't, even though we can't see the growth, we know that these students are going to grow and be 80 feet tall in the end at their graduation date. We thank the board, we thank the cabinet, we thank Dr. Ricker, we thank the parents and we thank all of the farmers in the room for sharing your children with us. We enjoy working here and we love you sharing with your children with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. Thanks, Ms. Lassiter.
Thank you.
I'm going to get a bamboo tree.
I know. It's all you White Plains.
Yeah. That was good. That was good.
I'd be walking around tomorrow.
Thank you. So next, um, next item on the agenda, we'll go to our public participation. The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person. Any matters of a more personal nature can be addressed with the superintendent and cabinet privately, because we want to respect everyone's anonymity and, you know, the issue, if there's any. So, any public participation? Step up to our podium, please, and please state your name and address for our minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Alyssa Gillan and I reside at Sixth Row Street here in White Plains. I'm the Board of Ed's building's neighbor. So thank you, esteemed members of the school of board for allowing me to speak. I am the mother of five. Three of my kids are White Plains High School graduates. The most recent is here with me tonight. I still have, I just told Mr. Dixon, I just told Mr. Dixon, here's your bamboo tree. One of them, one of them. He has, he has thousands at this point.
You have five, though.
Yeah. So I still have one in high school and one in middle school. And I'd like to start with a quick story from my son, who is currently a junior at Bucknell University, from his senior year of high school, which he was the terrible class of 2020, whoop. So he was the captain of the football team and I was, of course, the team mom. And I would often host team bonding activities at our house the day after a win. And it was a good year, they were league champs. So I found myself on Saturdays hosting 40 to 50 football players and feeding them. And the boys were wonderful and very comfortable in my home. And one day, as I was like serving dessert, one of these very tall, big football players just leaned into me so sweetly and in the, just the most precious voice said, Ms. Gilli, do you love us? To which I like looked up and said, you know I do, because you are all my sons. Okay, I want you to think about that, because I'll come back to that later. But the last time I was here in March of 2022, and I want to ask your forgiveness for not returning sooner, because as life opened up and we just tried to shove as much life as possible. So Monday nights, as I'm sure you know, are very sacrificial and I, it's not, it's, it, it does not go unnoticed what you do here. Okay? But a lot of things positive has transpired since then. But I, if you recall at that time, the children were still masked in school, even though the state mandates had ended. On a very personal level, my two youngest children, particularly my youngest, who's now with you, Mr. Dixon, and Ms. Lassiter, they suffered a lot academically. And I know that's not unusual. A lot of people suffered. I'm not, I'm no different than anybody else. We're not alone in that plight. But at that time, the Governor Hokel, Governor Hokel said that masks would stay in place until after the spring break. And the decision was made that the children would return to school in April for a week and then they would reassess whether the masks were needed. And at that meeting in March 2022, my husband spoke and there's, you know, videotape footage if you want to roll back, but not necessary. But he had said that school mask mandates will end and it will have nothing to do with science, but everything to do with politics and failing poll numbers. To which, at which point, I distinctly remember a few eyebrows on the dais being raised at that claim. But I want to respectfully remind you that Governor Hokel dropped the mandates before we even entered back in school in April, proving that it was not at all about science, but about political pressure and we were parents protesting in Albany. Now, I was grateful, so I was not going to look a gift horse in the mouth, but, but I, I saw what was happening and I know you all do too. But the reason why I'm here tonight is because there has been in the news this possible, like kind of looming threat, almost as evil carrot dangled over us, that masking could return. And I saw in the news and on social media, the Massapequa School District jumped on it right away and they wrote an open letter to Albany saying how there's so much more to consider with masking children than just COVID. It was a brave and bold decision for Massapequa to take a stance like that. And when I saw this letter, I reposted it and I tagged the White Plains Board of Education and I said to, I said, this is the kind of energy I want to see from my Board of Education. To which Mr. Letizia answered, I'm sorry if I misbit you in the last name, you should come to the next meeting and share your thoughts. So you can all thank him or blame him that I'm standing here today. I know you're under the authority of whatever Albany decides. I'm not delusional in that respect, but what I'm urging and encouraging is that you not to be afraid to take a public stance post a brave and perhaps unpopular opinion in Albany. We know so much more about COVID and its effects on children. While kids get it so much, while kids do get it, it's not with the same severity as older or immunocompromised adults. It is a merciful miracle that this has not had the devastating effects on our children, such as other things like polio in the past. And we say every day, take me, don't take my kids. We know that there is tragic, long-lasting delays that masking has caused on young children with speech delays and, and there's also evidence of pre-teens and teens having issues, social issues, not being able to just decode emotion properly because of this masking issue. And, and those are things that, you know, will be worked out through years, but there are so many more things to consider than just the spread of COVID with respect to masking. But that's not really why I'm here. I am here because I am part of this community and I appreciate you and I just want my Board of Ed to make those bold, brash and sometimes unpopular choices. If you had your fingers on the pulse of the parents of White Plains, you know it would be seen as heroic. Taking a stance, making something public that considers children first would be applauded, which is why I said, that's the kind of energy I want to see from my school board. I know this is an issue that has been politicized and that is shameful. We should always be caring for and considering our children first, period. They should never be made pawns as their lives are not games. I am passionate about God, country, family, children, education, the arts and my community. I also stand here before you as a newly hired contracted worker in the Eastview School. I'll be choreographing that Eastview on Broadway program. So while I'm here, Mr. Dixon, if I could get you to make a cameo that night, March 22nd, mark your calendars. If, if you'd like to see what a terrible director and, or how difficult it is, ask Dr. Crawford. She's done it for me when I did it at Ridgeway School. And congratulations to you, Dr. Crawford. But, um, so, like I said, mark your calendars, March 22nd, 7:00 PM, that's the show date. But I'm mentioning this because last year, I only volunteered to help at Eastview. I volunteered not because I had the time or needed something to do, but because Eastview parents were upset that the Eastview on Broadway show was going to be virtual. They began to apply pressure, there was rumblings, I don't know what you, okay, okay, there's your evidence, okay? But I am a parent and my fingers are on the pulse of the parents. And they came to me and asked what I could do. And I emailed Mr. Homes and was able to come and stand in and ultimately with my daughter collaborating, helped them put together a show. So my last sentence is, I encourage you to speak out, but to be brave and bold, I think you understand that as a member of White Plains, they're all my sons, they're all my kids, and I think you share the same sentiment. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your feedback. And we'll come to the plays. That was a good plug. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to our high school student. Okay. Any more public participation? Okay, we're going to move into our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
So move. Second. Thank you very much. I'd like to draw your attention to item 4B, our donations. And we are grateful for the following. $150 donated, this is amazing, $150 donation from Ron and Laura Ranieri toward the outstanding breakfast and lunch balances at Ridgeway School for the Child Nutrition Program. Thank you very much. $6,000 from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools, $3,000 of which will fund the purchase of avid team shirts for all students at Eastview Middle School and $3,000 is to fund the 123 Andres Performance in May of 2023. Three new Yamaha casual wind instruments to the music department from Ed and Donna Sirlin and a large book donation, three sets of reference books from Matt Gold for the middle school, middle, middle and high school students. So thank you very much to our generous donors this month.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
We are so fortunate here in White Plains for our donations, it's just, it's a blessing. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, if you remember, we did our administrative, individual administrative action earlier, so we don't have that. We're going to move right into board discussion on our board committee reports. We did have finance, but it was...
We had a presenter tonight, but in a shorter format.
Yes, thank you. And then, any other committee reports?
We had special ed. And it's very interesting. So, when I was a kid, a long time ago, just turned 64, special education looked very, very different. So, kids were taken away oftentimes on small buses, and put in, they went to BOSI's, and not much happened with them, and not much was expected of them, and not the staff in schools, the parents didn't expect a lot of these kids. So, I have 7,000 kids, and I've been on the special ed committee for many, many years, and Deb Algarten, and Susan, and Ebelies, and the entire staff have developed a vision for bringing kids back into our schools, our kids back into our schools, and then now raising the bar for them. So, this meeting that we had this week that was led by Deb and Susan and Ebelies was about efforts, budget-neutral efforts that will be undertaken. I left all my notes in the car, so I'm winging it. So, that will be undertaken to help with literacy and programs for these kids to raise the bar for them, because expectations on them are now different. It's a different world, and I want to thank Deb, and I want to thank everyone who works with her, and everyone who's bringing this to fruition, because it's really important. These are our kids, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
Well, only if I was going to tag Team Charlie. So, we're kind of spoiled, because we rely on Cheryl's notes, so I had to backtrack a little bit. So, we were able to listen to our K-12 special ed coaches, who gave us a presentation on some of the new methodology that will be used in special ed. And this is from K to 12, all levels. Elementary school will be using a reading rope and focusing on language comprehension and word recognition. By the end of this year, all our ICT and other teachers will participate in training in using that reading rope and supporting comprehension and word recognition. In the middle and high schools, there'll be additional support for our ICT teams, and we'll have workshops on smart goal writing and progress monitoring. So, in the past, we've created, we've created for our special ed students an IEP, an Individual Educational Plan, but there has not been much in the way of... Sorry. So, what we're doing is we're, right. So, the data that we're now seeing is supporting more goal monitoring and progress monitoring of those IEPs. So, we're hoping that all of this will, as Charlie said, raise that bar and get our special ed students doing so much better, because we know that they can.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, guys. Any other? The others?
Just a long finance meeting.
Yeah.
I told Joe I was going to leave if we were doing the 95 pages.
He would hit me and leave.
The details were really good, it was long, but there was a lot of...
And I had no voice, and I was coughing all the way through.
But at the same time, this is something that's available to the public. It's a resource document, and obviously, a lot of time and attention. And certainly, it's important, because it's about, our budget ends up being our moving forward policy.
Sorry. Our budget ends up being our implementation of our policy for our students, so it is very important.
And lastly, we have our high school building addition planning committee meetings. And I'll keep it brief, Ann and Frank and Joe, you know, we're meeting to really enhance our facilities for our students, for the careers that we don't even know, that are going to exist in a few years. And it's very exciting, because we all come from our professional backgrounds, and I know we each use a piece of that to try to even project what we think, like cybersecurity, like what would that classroom look like? Is it going to be a big enrollment? What does that look like for the future? So, we're trying to design a building that's going to really enhance support and grow our students, and give enough resource to our teachers and our staff, all staff, to do what they need to do to move our students forward, not only forward, but also upward. So, they're very interesting meetings that I've been attending, and I'll continue to be there. And thank you, Ann and Frank, for all you do and all your contributions there.
I could just add too, I'm not on the committee, but the notes that we get as board members who are not on the committee, they're just so thorough, we know who's saying what, who's contributing, the design, I mean, it's just so, it's really, I just appreciate the communication and the...
Very thorough.
Yeah, when I see my little initials in the notes that I see, I'm like, oh, my gosh, at least I sounded coherent. So, just before we all move to adjournment, you know, we have John Shepherd and John Savitz behind the screen there, and we thank you, a Happy New Year for all you do, and the importance of their work in terms of making sure this information is available for everyone.
Madam President, I have a little bit of a surprise. Mr. Shepherd and I, we were doing a little test this evening. Didn't want to make it an announcement, but I just kind of got the high sign from them that we think we're okay. We are live streaming our meetings right now. So, we wanted to test it out tonight, so it's happening right now. And we will publicize that for our upcoming meetings, so folks who aren't able to participate...
How does that work with public participation? Is that just view?
We're not there yet, just view.
Okay, good thing I came from work, right? Like, good thing I came from work.
We'll get there, we'll get there.
You know, so, you know, well, thank you even more. Thank you to everyone who came, thank you for your participation. You know, we thrive on feedback, and especially when our students accompany it. It's such a blessing to see the engagement of our students and their advocacy, so thank you. And to all of our PTA council, just everyone, thank you so much. You know, our cabinet and everyone, and Frank, so thank you, thank you, thank you, Joe, thank you, everyone. Happy New Year. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, move.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.